I would like to call to order the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you for joining us. Mary, can you start with the roll call, please?
You, Beth Lewis. Palmer.
Here.
Simon.
Here.
Granland, here.
Mueller.
Here.
Superintendent Stenbik.
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next, we will move on to the Agenda Approval Adjustments Announcements and Correspondence, and we'll start with the approval of Agenda. Of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Second by Mary. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the announcements. On Friday, November eleventh, there is no school. On Friday, November fifteenth, at five thirty PM, which is a Tuesday, there is a special called Board Meeting here in the Community Room. On November fifteenth, Tuesday, at five forty PM, there's a School Board Work Session in the Community Room. On November fifteenth, Tuesday, at seven PM, there's a School Board Subcommittee on Community Engagement here in the Community Room. November twenty-second, at seven PM, is a regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room. November twenty-third, Wednesday, is a Flex Learning Day. And November twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, there is no school. Um, next, we'll move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbik, is there any correspondence?
Chair Mueller, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Um, next, we will do our Citizen and Employee Representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The School Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the Administration follow up. The Board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. We ask anyone indicating a desire to speak about a matter on the Board's agenda. Let's see. It will be acknowledged by the Board Chair. When called upon to speak, please move up to the presenters' table with the microphone. All remarks should be addressed to the Board as a whole, not to any specific member. If there are any individuals presented to speak on the same topic, please designate a spokesperson. We just have a couple, so that shouldn't be an issue. I thought there was something on here really, oh, yes. Related to data privacy. I know we talked to, I talked to both the members here about that earlier. So we do have two people here to speak to the Board. If you just give one second, we do pause the recording during this time. And are we back? Great, thank you very much. Thank you to those who chose to speak to us tonight regarding the School Resource Officers. Next, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes the Personnel Report, the School Board Minutes from the October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, and the October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Work Session, as well as the Policy Second Reading, which includes two oh eight Development of Policies, two oh nine Code of Ethics, two ten Conflict of Interest, four oh five, or excuse me, four oh four Employment Background Check, Form Only, four sixteen Drug and Alcohol Testing, four eighteen Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free School Zone, five twelve Schools Sponsored Student Publications, and seven twenty-two Public Data Request. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Brenna, in a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, it's just one quick question. Do we get any? I did not receive any input from the community about these, uh, the second reading here. I don't know if anybody else received any.
The first, in the first reading, Member Granland received a comment, and there was a, an error that needed to be amended, and those had, have since been amended and posted in the second reading. And since that, we've not received any additional.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next, we'll move on to Discussion Reports and Information Items. We'll start with reports from members of the Board, and we will start with Brenna.
So, uh, yeah, I have not done much since last week. We've done mostly election things, so, yeah, I don't. I have had many conversations with people in the community about both the SRO stuff and just overall, especially about our LGBT policies and keeping our kids safe. And I've had conversations with Member Palmer and Member Granland and Superintendent Stenbik.
Great, thank you. Mary?
Okay. I was able to meet with City Council Member Abdullah from New Brighton. I had a chance to sit down and talk with him. We, particularly about the SRO contracts between what it looks like in the Maasview School District and, and ours. I met with students' parents about robotics and that team, working on getting some more support for robotics, and maybe some three D printers, here's hoping. And then I had phone calls with Members Simon, Superintendent Stenbik, Kelly Bourgeois at This City, and also Chair Mueller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura?
Yeah, it's been a really busy couple of weeks. I did attend the monthly meeting for Northeast Metro nine sixteen. I had quite a few conversations with community members, and I really appreciate the conversations that I've had regarding different policies and how, how we do things. I also was able to attend the trunk-or-treat, which was just an incredibly beautiful day. There were, I think, everybody, and everybody came not just from Columbia Heights, they were coming from surrounding communities. So it was great to see everybody out having a good time. And then the helicopter landed, and we lost everybody. They all went over the helicopter. So we'll have to time things a little bit better and maybe park a little closer to where they land it. You know, that way, we get to talk with everybody. So I think that's pretty much it. Oh, I did have numerous conversations with pretty much everybody here around the table, and I appreciate your time.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Um, I also attended the trunk-or-treat, as did all of us.
Yep.
Right here. All five of us were there. So that, that was, as Laura said, that was a great event, and it was fun to see everybody in that capacity. Um, I also attended the Alumni Foundation Dinner, the Scholarship Dinner. Member Granland was also there as well.
Thank you.
So attended that. Attended a chair meeting prior to this, which Member Palmer's. I'm just gonna like fill yours all in too. Member Palmer was there as well. Vice Chair Palmer, Vice Chair Palmer and Superintendent Stenbik. And I also had a meeting, and I had conversations with Vice Chair Palmer, Member Granland, Member Lewis, and Superintendent Stenbik. So it's been a busy couple of weeks. Superintendent Stenbik, do you have a report for us?
Yes, I have a brief report. This week, I met with the Principals along with Director Tuckrell and Director Niambue for our monthly Lead and Learn Meeting. And this month, the Principals shared out what we are calling Checkpoint Number Two. And it's part of our Heighten Up Plan for Academic Acceleration. Principals provided an analysis of academic screening data, growth objectives, and strong literacy lessons that included learning targets, effective strategies for accessing grade-level text, and interventions tailored to the needs of individual students. So it was really remarkable, after everything everyone's been through, how they're able to drill down to see how individual students are growing in this first quarter of school. Unfortunately, in the schools, we are experiencing students coming down with things like RSV, influenza, colds. So working with the schools with absenteeism due to illness. Not as much COVID, but definitely all of the other things that, that people have been hearing about on the news. We're experiencing that here as well. Director Niambue and I also met with the local clergy group here in Columbia, Columbia Heights, and we discussed the many ways that they can provide support to students and families. And I was really impressed with how willing they are and how, I mean, we all know how caring they are, but they really are very caring when it comes to our, our school and our entire community. And I had conversations with each and every Board member, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the Elementary Strategic Roadmap, and we will have Executive Director Niambue and our three elementary school Principals, Mr. Sussex, Principal Jenki, and Mr. Coolman, present to us.
I'm the only one in person, so allow me to share my screen, and then we'll get started. The Principals are with us, they're just remote.
I just would like to call out that Principal Coolman said that they were meeting in person today, so they were joining us in person, so.
Can everybody see my screen? Thank you. Good evening, Chair Mueller, and members of the Board and Superintendent Stenbik. I'm here tonight with our three elementary school Principals to present our building vision cards. So each Principal will share about some of the great happenings from last year, academic and non-academic. And we'll get started. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. So throughout their presentation tonight, all our core values will be represented, and I continue to share that the Board Equitimation Statement is also represented in this presentation and core values. This is an informational update and no governance questions. And our strategic roadmap, you know, our building vision card is part of our strategic roadmap, and we will see how well our students performed and how well our staff were supported, as well as how we continue to do the work in our school. And I just want to remind us that this is data from last year, so it's not from this year. And with that said, I'm gonna invite Principal Jenki to start us off.
All right. Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. It's my pleasure to be actually right next door to you tonight. So you probably noticed my office. I'll start off with A1 Mental Health and Wellness. Again, in most areas, we're very comparable with the, the school year previous, with one exception of teacher absences, and that is the continuation of the number of staff members who are out, or who were out last school year with COVID. Obviously, we, we did have some teachers who needed to quarantine, and the standard quarantine last year was ten days. So that did increase our teacher absences, although for very good reasons. But again, licensed staff participating in health and wellness was at Vision, as well as, for, on the student side, we do offer, or we do do a mental health screener of all students in the spring at Highland. And then the services are provided beginning in the fall of the year, and that's a combination of our psychologist, social worker, and then services that are provided via Lee Carlson. And then also PD sessions focused on trauma. We continue to have some on building days, as well as some on district days. School climate. We continue to be focused on especially out-of-school and in-school suspension, really being mindful that our students need to be in class to be learners. And we're pleased to say that we maintain very low numbers in these two areas at Highland. So again, we're at Vision in both of these areas. Personalized learning. Obviously, when students were out last year, we out, or learning from home, we used CSO more than we typically would in a, in a typical school year, in elementary school. So it's really a combination of when there were students or classrooms that were out, there was a high use of CSO and Google. And that was a little bit less last year with bringing students back into school. Our FAST scores. We had thirty, so looking, this is looking at proficiency. So thirty-nine percent of students meeting growth target was our measure from the previous year. I'm pleased to say that we did increase that pretty substantially last school year. Our focus was really on growth all year. So I noted both reading and math. Our students in typical or aggressive growth in math was between sixty and sixty-nine percent, and then in reading, between fifty and fifty-nine percent. And then students meeting their math tar, or math fact targets was that baseline. Typically, it's more of a, of a focus in grades two through five, less of a focus in K and one, so that's where you see some of the difference in students meeting their focus or, or meeting their, their targets or not. Communications. Parents using ParentView is about eighty percent. We do encourage parents to sign up for ParentView. We had another kind of encouragement again at Open House, highlighting the fact that report cards only come to parents via ParentView. So we had opportunity for parents to sign up using our devices. We will communicate that out again with the report cards, but it's just encouraging parents to sign up and then use it. Principal Communications to Families, I send multiples every week, so it's much more than twenty percent of families enrolled in CSO. As long as we have a good, or a good email address, all families are enrolled. Their main communication method with teachers. And teachers using CSO is pretty much everyone using it on a regular basis. Some teachers using it a little bit less than others. I would say pre-K through grade two using it every day. They send pictures of what the students are doing in class, also newsletters and et cetera on CSO. In the area of family engagement, we definitely focus on getting our families into school. That's been our main focus of this school year. We did have one night of Zoom conferences, as well as one night of in-person conferences, which started last school year. We didn't have many events that were in-person last school year. However, near the end of the year, and also events that we were able to do outside, we did bring families in to the building a couple of times, but then also had very, very large events that were held outside of the school. So two that we had in the spring, we brought in families for a March PTO Family Fun Night, where we had over three hundred people attend. And our family picnic. For those of you, many of you are, are former Highland parents, we had over six hundred people attend our family picnic. We were overrun, did not plan for enough food, but it just shows how much families wanted to get back into the buildings and be re-engaged with family engagement and, and coming to things for their children. We, year to year, maintain our conferences at a very high level because the teachers work hard to reschedule or offer alternate, whether that's Zoom or phone calls, to make sure that they're conferencing with all families. Returning mandatory forms. Again, our focus is really free and reduced lunch, as well as technology forms. So we're progressing in that area. And then maintain strong interest in Encore at Highland as well. All right. The last area, improving outcomes by reducing variability. So percentage of grade levels and departments using common planning time is one hundred percent. We also use, we have common PLC time, one hour per week for every grade level and department. Teachers using grade-level curriculum. Again, that's something that we expect in both reading and math. That, that is also at Vision. And then financial responsibility is at Vision as well. So school goals. Again, I mentioned it in, in one of the slides previous, but our school goal was really looking at growth this school year. As we came back off of a lot of distance learning in the previous year, we were really focusing on growth, and you'll hear that from all three Principals. But our growth goal was the percentage of students making typical or aggressive growth as measured by FAST literacy will be fifty-one percent by the spring screening window. Highland ended up at fifty-six percent. So we surpassed the growth that we were hoping to get. And then the other school goal was our PLC time. The percentage of teams meeting or exceeding as measured by the SIG, the Strategy Implementation Guide, will be seventy percent by the end of the year, and we also met this goal. We were at, I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it was about eighty-five percent. The other goal that we, it's not an official goal, but we really set it as part of our Title One Plan, is we're always looking for more diverse representation on our PTO, at PTO meetings, at evening events, and at conferences. And some things that we do is providing workshops to parents on topics of interest, so that is achieved through our EL Family Night, as well as REACH. Highland was one of the REACH sites last year. Communication going out in multiple languages, and then having a Zoom option. We continue to have a Zoom option this year for PTO meetings, and we do have people Zoom in, as well as for conferences. And these are just a few pictures from the bike giveaway, or bike giveaway at the end of the school year, and then a couple of students on Open House night, and then students back to school in the first week in our second music room in Room Four, because we have two music teachers again this year.
Thank you, Principal Jenki. Are there any questions for Principal Jenki?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Congratulations. I saw that we just approved the social worker for Highland, which is exciting. One question, and I don't, I, this isn't necessarily specific to you, Principal Jenki, but I'm trying to remember, does ParentView automatically change the language of the family? I'm looking at.
Not ParentView. When we send out a SMORE newsletter, or when it goes through Blackboard, that does. So there's an automatic, or there's a translate option.
Yep.
So that's why when we typically send out information, at least from me, I always send it out via SMORE and Blackboard rather than, even rather than CSO. It's just an easier method to get it out to families quickly, but it also has the translate option.
Okay. And conference, or, uh, report cards are translated, right?
Board, Board Member Granland, I could add some insight into that. The, as you enter ParentView, it can be translated, the buttons and the directions in there. However, when you're uploading various documents, such as report cards into that, those are not translated. We, we have to send all translated report cards to families if, if we want that to happen.
Thank you so much. I was curious because I know that you had talked about how there is a push to encourage parents to use that, and family members to use that. And I was curious because I know that our district has a wonderful amount of families that speak lots of different languages, and I was curious if that was a barrier to that. So, that answered my question. Thank you, thank you both so much, I appreciate it. Any other questions for Principal Jenki?
Okay, we're gonna move to North Park, and I'm gonna invite Principal Sussex.
Members of the Board, Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenbik, good evening. You know, Principal Jenki did a wonderful job of describing all of the vision card areas, so I will be a little bit more brief and just go over our performance. Of course, you can see a few excellent pictures of our, of our, of our school and our staff and our students there. Our goal last year for literacy was that we would make typical or aggressive growth in sixty percent of our students as measured by FAST. And we came, we, we did really well. We didn't quite hit sixty percent, but you'll see that when we get to that area of the vision card. Our second goal was that the percentage of teams meeting or exceeding as measured by this, by the SIG for PLCs would be a hundred percent by the end of the year, and we did hit that. Okay, so, mental health and wellness. You know, like Highland and Valley View, our staff does an awful lot of PD around mental health and wellness, and, and that is shows. And I think that Principal Jenki did a good job of describing why we were at the lowest level with staff absences. COVID tends to do that. And our attendance did improve last year from eighty-two percent. We were up to eighty-nine percent. And really, it's, it's, uh, that, that, that was kind of impressive because we did have a lot of kids out with COVID throughout the year. And we had fewer of our, fewer than sixty percent of our stu, or, sorry. One hundred percent of our students were screened, using the same screener that the other schools use for mental health, and one hundred percent of them were offered services who, who required them. And we also have had several professional development sessions focused on trauma. Out-of-school suspensions and in-school suspensions, like the other schools, we just don't do it a whole lot. Kids need to be in school, and when they're in school, we really try to avoid exclusionary practices, and in-school suspension is, is very much an exclusionary practice. Personalized learning. So we had more than ninety percent of our classrooms in twenty-one, because a hundred percent of them were using CSO or Google Classroom. And that went down to somewhere below seventy-five, it was about seventy-one percent. Our teachers really embraced being in person, and, and we saw a lot less use than, than even we're seeing this year, and that we wouldn't in a normal year. The teachers really just did a, a lot of face-to-face direct instruction. And looking at math and reading, forty-nine percent of our kids met their reading growth target, and sixty-one percent of our kids met their math growth target. And that's a little bit counterintuitive because our math scores were significantly lower than our reading scores. But that just speaks to how, how low our, our math scores were in the fall when we came back. It's, it's clear that COVID wreaked a bit more havoc on math growth and reading growth. And our math fact targets, fewer than fifty percent of our students met those, and that's something we're focusing on this year using Spring Math. Last year's Spring Math was, if you want to, intervention because we were also implementing Project Lead the Way and press interventions. And we can only add so much in one year, especially a year like last year. And this year, it is a directive that all teachers in all classrooms will use Spring Math every day, and so far, we've had one hundred percent compliance. Communications, you know, just, just like Principal Jenki, there, there's an awful lot of communication coming from our office. Weekly newsletters, and, and if you'll remember, our Dean of Students, Mr. Meyer, last year did, oh, a weekly morning announcements recording that he shared with families. And one hundred percent, or near one hundred percent of our students, of our families are enrolled in CSO. And not as many use CSO as did during distance learning, obviously. Parents, that is. So whenever we send something home, we send it via CSO as well as Blackboard. And our teachers using CSO did go down just, just a bit. And that really is a function of, teachers like our EL teachers don't really use CSO as much. of, teachers like our EL teachers don't really use CSO as much. All of our classroom teachers do use it, but when we put the, when you do the math, it's just a little bit under 90%. And then family engagement, so we went from having almost no family engagement during our distance learning year, to having a few events last year. We had conferences, and we had, we had the color run in the fall, and we had a very well-attended barbecue in May. It's, we couldn't keep up with them food-wise, there were so many people, and it was clear that they just wanted to be out and to be together, and, and we were grateful for that. We had far fewer of our families visiting CSO at least one time per week, and again, that's a function of us being in person. And we always have high conference participation, it's usually around 95%. Our, our teachers offer home visits, and phone conferences, and Zoom conferences, and rescheduling dates, whatever they can, to give families as many options as possible to, to be able to, to sit and discuss their students. And we had over 95% of our parents returning their mandatory forms last year. We did quite well with, with the lunch forms last year, and we had just, just under 50% of our students were involved in Encore. And improving outcomes by reducing variability, you know, all of our grade level teachers and specialists have a Common Prep, and they all use the board-approved curriculum. And looking at budgets, we're, like the other principals, we work really hard to be responsible with, with the money that we are given. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Principal Sussex? No, thank you.
Thanks.
Principal Coleman, you're next.
Thank you. Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenvik, members of the board. I'm excited to, to talk about Valley View. I think last year, for all of us, students, staff, and family, it was probably one of our most difficult years, and I think as of all the other schools in Columbia Heights, and probably the state as well. So I'm, I'm very proud of, of what we've accomplished, we had some, some room to grow, but that's the mindset that we had last year, and we continue to have as a growth mindset. So, you understand, because Principal Jenke and Principal Sussex went through, so I may be even briefer, but hopefully there will be questions. So 100% of our staff went through the health and wellness of professional development. I think that was critical for all of us, just to make it through last year, and, and be healthy in our own minds, and be able to be healthy for us, so we could support our kids. So I'm, I'm very happy to say that. Teacher absences, enough said on that. Student attendance stays, we still are in that 74% to 84% baseline last year. Last year hit us hard, so that does not surprise me. We are working and doing things a little bit differently this year to boost that up. Mental health screeners, as the other two elementaries, it's a standard practice that we're doing. But I think it also went way beyond just our students that were identified. All of us needed support and help, and, and what we did in our classrooms, and how our teachers responded to those needs. I think the need was, how do we just get along, and how do we, in a common space, the last couple of years before that? So there was a lot of yoga calm going on in the classrooms, and different mimos, just motion, so we can get our kids up and going and talking, and interreacting, or reacting with each other. So that was, that's not showing on here, but I think it's something that needs to be stressed. Four or more sessions about trauma, I think teaching and learning needs a big shout-out, because they were the ones, along with the SEL Elementary Pathway, that really developed those, and were utilized during that time. So, moving on. We have out-of-school suspensions, and then ISS, again, we are really trying to reduce those exclusionary practices, and, and how we work around those, so it's fewer than 10% in both of those. All right, teaching, you're learning the LMS or the learning model, that has decreased last year, and, and I think rightfully so. I think we needed to get better in the same room. So some of those uses have dipped, and we can see that here. And I'm not, even though it's in a high-concern category, I'm actually pretty proud, because we need our, our staff working with our kids with hands. Math and reading, we improved, if you can imagine that, over the years. So in reading, we improved a little bit more, we were actually at 46% as measured by FAST. And then our math took a huge jump, and I agree with Principal Sussex that, that was probably the hardest hit over COVID and in distance learning. So our kids showing some real growth in that, and that's with limited PD around that, but I'm very proud of that. Students' Math Facts, they're still maintaining there, they're at that less than 50%. What I can report, and I'm proud to say, is that Spring Math was a huge hit. We did, we initiated or piloted that, along with the other two elementary schools last year. Our teachers grabbed onto it. If you come to Valley View, and you smell popcorn, you will know that one of our classes have passed a Spring Math level. Another way we motivate our kids, we pop popcorn. And this week alone, I think we had like seven classes that have gotten popcorn parties. But it's moving. And again, I think teaching and learning, they brought in a expert to help us improve our implementation, and this year, it's really taken hold, and, and kids are moving. So I, I'm excited to report next year, or hopefully on this year's data, that we have moved up, because it's, it's such a critical point in our students' math, math development. Percent of parents using ParentView is down, and as I said to Board Member Granland, we're, we're frustrated with it, but we're also, our parents, there's some barriers. And again, it's, it's about the, the ability to translate report cards. We are working hard to get our parents signed up for it, and on, but the use of it is low, because I think it, the functionality for them is difficult. And I know exactly, is about the, the report cards and translating them. So one of the things we did, and we do last year, is we send home a translated report card for all of our second language families, so that they have equitable access to their students' grades. Principal Communication, I think we had more than 20, you know, student exposures, but beyond that, we've sent home a lot more communication to families, and I think it's to keep them in the loop and feeling part of our school community. It's, it's the one way that we can keep them involved, but not have that face-to-face contact. Families enrolled in CSO, that was over 70%, and it's been that way for the couple of years. We pushed that hard, and I think really that is, and, and Principal Jenke had said it, it's about our, our, our teachers showing a snapshot of what's happening in their child's room. So it's a way for parents to actually get into the room without physically being there, but it's also reassuring for them, because they know what their, their children are going through on a daily basis in their classroom, and seeing what's going on. Percent of teachers using it still is high, but I agree, some of our special ed and our specialists aren't super engaged yet in it, because it's hands-on. They're, they're doing the work that needs to be done, and, and working individually with students, and maybe not pushing out as much, but our classroom teachers are, are highly pushing out. Events promoting academic achievement, we are well over eight, even though with the pandemic hitting us hard in November last year, we still did a lot of online and in-person events. One of the, the wonderful events that I'd experienced the first time at Valley View was actually the carnival, and it was an amazing event. It was, it happened later in the year, and we were able to bring families in. From what I understand, it wasn't as big, but it was, as years passed, but it was a good showing, so very happy with that. CSO, we're still, we, we dropped, and again, a product of the pandemic. We're in person, we're teaching, I think families aren't accessing it as, as much in years, in future years, I expect that to go up, but a little burnout hit, and that, that's kind of what was happening. Percent of parents doing mandatory forms, again, we're getting, we're getting our parents interacting, good job of the free and, or the educational benefits form, it's still up there. Encore is, is improving, obviously from the year before, being in, in distance learning, last year, we were able to bring in 31% to 40% of our kids, and, and that's in before or after-school programming, which was fun seeing them again. Common planning time, it, of our schools, we're really working together, all of our classrooms and grade levels, to really meet the students' needs. And I think that's the same thing as teachers working on and using grade level curriculum. It's important, but also, we have to recover, there's a lot of learning loss that was happening. So absolutely, students are exposed and getting that grade level, but we're also really pushing to say, where are students at, and how do we meet them where they're at? And, and Valley View really is pushing a workshop model, where we do have a mini lesson at, at grade level, but then diving deeper into, what is the personalized needs of each student, and how do we meet them? So that, that's been happening as well. Budgets, I would love for Superintendent Stenvik to give me more, and I will be very fiscally responsible, but we are definitely in with both margins, and following that as well. All right, so our goal, and again, we, I'm, go big or go home. So the percentage of students making typical aggressive growth as measured by the FAST literacy, 5%, we did not meet that, I'm, I'm sad to say. We're at 46%, but we are growing, and we've modified, and we've done some different things this year that will help grow that. Again, as North Park had in theirs, the percentage of teams meeting or exceeding as measured by the Strategic Implementation Guide will be at 100% by the end of the year, and I'm very happy to say that we are, we have met that goal. And what we did to achieve these goals, we enhanced literacy PLCs. We really focused in on that, and more so even focusing in what were the individual needs of the students. You know, you, you can, you can do a whole group, but you might not be getting everybody, you know? So the whole group is at grade level instruction, but then it's going deeper into what each student needs. Implementation of the workshop, focus on guided reading, and that kind of goes towards that. Professional development of avid strategies, so bringing in, and, and Valley View has a lot of leaders, avid leaders in our building, so we're producing our own PD on that. This year, and that we have this year, we're bringing everybody up to speed, so. And then utilizing benchmark data to target instruction. And just some pictures from some of our events, if you know, on the, the center, top center, there might be a few people that you know. This was at one of our events, and I think it was, Board Member Granland, was that at the carnival, or was that at the picnic at the beginning of the year?
That, was that the, ah, Fun Run, maybe? No?
Oh, that's where you were torturing me with the water bucket.
You know, I did not, I had, I did not pour that bucket.
But then a few pictures of our classrooms, Blooming Heights, and just some of our wonderful A question, or one other celebration, before we get to questions. If you notice, Principal Sussex, you know, he forced us to be home today, because it my birthday, so he's up for his birthday, so congratulations and happy birthday, Principal Sussex.
Aww. Happy birthday.
Well, happy birthday, Principal Sussex.
Happy birthday.
And thank you for joining us on your birthday. Any questions anybody has? Mary?
Thank you all so much. For, for you, Mr. Coleman and Mr. Sussex, looking at the reading targets for kids, I know at Valley View, they have, I believe, if I remember correctly, we have reading interventionists at every, for every grade level, which is new, because it was not always like that. It only went up to third grade until a year or two ago?
So as part of academic acceleration with the pandemic funding,
Yeah.
we were able to add, instead of K1 and 2 reading interventions, we were able to double that, and also include reading intervention in grades 3, 4, and 5.
Awesome. Is that just at Valley View, or is that?
All three elementary schools.
Fantastic.
All, all three elementarys.
Have you seen any preliminary data about how that is working to support the students in that growth target?
It's amazing. That's where a lot of our significant growth has come from. And, you know, last year, we had so many of our kids came in, and were initially struggling, they were quite busy. A lot of kids ended up testing out, with enough time left in the year, that our interventionists were able to take on additional students.
That's, that's amazing. You know, as a parent whose children benefited from having that, I was really excited to hear that it was expanded, and I'm really, really excited to see that it's helping so many more students, so thank you so much.
Any other questions? Good question, thank you.
I guess I just kind of have a comment, like I, I know I've had lots of community questions about, like, our, our MCA scores and report cards that go out to the state, and I've just been so, this has been such a great presentation, just talking about how you guys are on the ground, day to day, finding out what kids need, and, I mean, to have accelerated above and beyond growth at 60%, I mean, like, you guys are killing it, and you're doing awesome, and I really hope that we can do some things as a board and as a school district to get that message out, because I just, I love what you're doing, and I want that encouragement to our community, to know that our kids are reading, and our kids are learning math, and they're growing, and you guys are, are working really hard, so thank you for doing all that.
Thank you.
Great comment, thank you Brenna. Any other questions?
I just, I just have a comment too, and I, I've noticed that I think that several years ago, being able to coordinate that Common Prep time, I know that that was a big goal, so I'm glad to see that across the board, that we're at 100% vision, and, and I think that that's, being able to work together and be able to collaborate, I think is just incredibly important, and it definitely shows up in the growth that's been made. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, thank you Executive Director Niemwee, and all of our three principals, for your time this evening.
Thanks.
Next, we will be, have a presentation on the World's Best Workforce Annual Report with Director Tuckrell.
Good evening, Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here tonight to provide information on our World's Best Workforce Annual Report for 2021, 2022. I do want to give the disclaimer, as Superintendent Stenvik mentioned, there's a lot of things going around. I think mine are still allergies, but you see, I do have backup, I have Director Niemwee and Stunkel as my backup for it. Our Michelin and Columbia Heights Public Schools are creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and focusing in on the core values of community, excellence, and innovation tonight, which are aligned with the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education Equity Statement. Here tonight is an informal presentation, and I'll be returning on the 22nd to ask approval of the 2021, 2022 World's Best Workforce Annual Report. The World's Best Workforce Annual Report is a requirement in Minnesota Statute, Section 120B11, which states each year, school districts must publish a report, whether in local newspaper, mail, or electronic means, on the district website. So our World's Best Workforce Annual Report is published on our website, and we publish it on the website for many reasons, we're able to push it out in different ways, which I'll share about that as well. The World's Best Workforce Report is based upon goals given by the Department of Education, and rely heavily on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments on MCA. And we know with our low participation in the last couple of years, that it isn't a true reflection, as we heard from the principals tonight, of all the things our students and staff are doing. And so in Columbia Heights, we have district assessments, which we use to support our instruction, which are aligned to the World's Best Workforce goals. So it is linked here, but to avoid going back and forth between the internet, I took some snips of it, so we can look through it this way. The first goal on World's Best Workforce is looking at getting students prepared and ready for kindergarten, so all students ready for kindergarten. For this goal, we look at TS Gold, and we were able to meet that goal in the last school For this goal, we look at TS goal and we were able to meet that goal in the last school year. Goal area number two is reading by third grade and it is increasing proficiency. We were not able to meet that goal on MCAs for last year, but we did see amazing growth and we're excited to continue that growth as we go into this year with the many strategies we have in place. The third goal on the World's Best Workforce Report is to decrease the achievement gap, as stated by the Department of Education, between different ethnic groups. And we met it in some areas, but not in every different group. So we still have some work to do on that one. The fourth goal is creating college and career readiness. And for this one, we also look at MCAs. So we go back to the MCAs, which were a hard indicator to look at. But we do have many other indicators within the district, including PSAT, SAT, the number of our students enrolled in early college, as well as AP courses, which really helps support that college and career readiness. And goal number five is to increase the graduation rate. It's interesting because we still don't have our graduation rate for 2022. But when we look back at previous graduation rates for 2021, we were at ninety-three point three percent, which was way above the state. So we are exceeding that goal and we hope to see the same thing when we receive that 2022 graduation rate. This report will be posted online and then in collaboration with Director Stunkel and the Communications Department, we also try to include a lot about academics in our goals, in the Community Connections, in the Highlander Connect Newsletter, and the Columbia Heights Update, so that we're able to support the many things that are happening, including the goals of World's Best Workforce. Did that all stop sharing? Any questions?
Great. One item I will note before I ask questions, if you had trouble seeing that, if you click the link in Board Book, it does come up, so you can get that on your own time as well. So, any questions? Brenna?
I'm just wondering if you can elaborate a little bit on some of the strategies for closing achievement gaps and what exactly you guys are working on?
Yeah, definitely. So some of the things that we're looking at is some of the support we have academically. We really are focusing in on equity as being internal work as well as other things such as literacy. Improving our literacy scores is also equity. So we have a focus in on literacy this year and really taking our scores and breaking it down by the different groups. Bringing it down by racial groups, breaking it down by EL, non-EL, special ed, non-special ed. So we're really focusing in on the needs of the students. As part of that internal work, we are working with some outside consultants who are supporting and coaching. They're coming on our district aides, but then they're also coming into the schools and working with the administration and their equity team and bringing that to the school. So they're focusing in on our goals of literacy and supporting our students and hoping to see some of that academic achievement gap change a little as we work through these strategies.
Thank you. Other questions? Mary, you had a question?
I do. I'm gonna, forgive me if I am not remembering exactly who it was, but there was a meeting with somebody recently, the Regional Centers for Excellence, where they were discussing our response to the MCAs. Is that, does that ring a bell, Director Tuckrell?
Yes, I'm sure Superintendent Stenvik can jump in too.
Yes, yeah. Can you give us a little bit of an update from what they had to say about?
Yes, definitely. And we met with the Regional Center of Excellence as, looking at the report card, we have two schools identified, Valley View Elementary and North Park School for Innovation. And once you have two schools identified for comprehensive support, the district is identified. So we met, Superintendent Stenvik and I had the opportunity to meet with them in the schools and share with them the different things that we are doing. We shared about our professional development, we walked through classrooms, we discussed instruction, we discussed support with literacy, we discussed the things that we're pushing on in terms of our assessments using FastBridge and Press. And after that conversation, I had an opportunity to talk to them afterwards, even recently in the past week, and discuss all the amazing things we have. And one of them had mentioned, there are so many things happening in Columbia Heights that I don't see in many other districts. And so they've been reaching back out and connecting with our district to hear about some of them, connecting districts with us to hear about the things that we're doing. And I also had the opportunity to talk to them about how the MCAs are being used as a measure for multiple goals on this World's Best Workforce. That we have MCAs being used for three of our goals. So if we don't meet it in one, we tend not to make the others. So we're in conversation with the Department of Education and with her to discuss some ways that we could adjust it or really focus in on the goals that we have in our school that were shared earlier by the principals. Because those really guide our everyday work.
Wonderful, thank you.
I think, I think Director Tuckrell covered it. You know, when we have, when we have had meetings with the regional centers in the past, it's been in a conference room here at the district center. And this year we chose to take a tour of our schools. And so folks who, like previous superintendents from other districts, previous educator, you know, educators who are now working with the Department of Education, walked through and in and out of classrooms. And, and just what Director Tuckrell said, our phone is ringing off the hook now from other school districts wanting to come and see what we're doing. And they're hearing all of the processes and protocols that we're putting in place for academic acceleration.
Thank you very much. Great question. Any other questions? Thank you, Director Tuckrell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Executive Director Nimway and Director Hennigens regarding the School Resource Officer Contract.
Thank you Chair Mueller, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik this evening. I have Executive Director Nimway and myself representing on the School Resource Officer Contract and talking about data along with that survey and focus groups that we did. So our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values, again, grounded on the CHPS Board of Education Equity Statement are aligned with. This evening, this is an informational update. We had a chance to talk to the school board about this back on October eighteenth, providing information again this evening. And we'll be seeking approval for that contract in November twenty-second meeting. So I just wanted to start briefly with the goals of the program and to work with, so SRO program to work with our schools administrators, counselors, or teachers, students, to develop a better understanding, a more positive attitude among students as a role of a police officer, to work in resource with the school officials to provide as much possible a safe, crime-free environment for our students and staff, and to act as law enforcement consultant and educator to Columbia Heights School District and all of our schools located in Columbia Heights and Hilltop. And we do this through some objectives. And objective number one, which is difficult for me to read with this thing on here, to provide form, process, or rationale to enhance school safety, reduce the need for police, monitor and help in preventing gang activity and handle incidents that occur. You know, so objective two, providing that overall service. So again, you're monitoring that gang activity and really attempting to provide that enhanced school safety and reducing the need for, you know, farm officers on our school premises. You know, objective three, complete all investigations as assigned. And objective four, improvement and continual updated liaison program is very important. So we meet quarterly to discuss the data, discuss what's happening with the program, discuss things that we're hearing. And then there's an annual evaluation where we're, again, looking at our data for the year. And then a five, provide culturally relevant services for our schools. So we know that the police department has many hours of culturally relevant training that they do and equity training that they do. But we also wanted to ensure that they were participating in ours as well. So they understood what our teachers are receiving and receiving that same level of cultural competency and equity training that our staff are receiving. So those are the, the goals and objectives of the SRO program. And with that, I want to turn it over to Executive Director Nimway to talk about some of the data.
Thank you, Director Hennigens. So part of our presentation that we conducted in October is to bring you some information that we have from our student and staff survey as well as our focus group. So our survey was about a participant, about twelve hundred. And then we did two focus groups of students, but not staff. And at the high school, we had ninety-three students in the focus group and seventy-four at Columbia Academy. And so to set off the stage, just want to be clear that this survey was anonymous. And like with every survey, there are limitations. And the limitation from this survey are as follow. Student and staff had the option to self-select their grade, race, and role. Some survey participants selected multiple grades, roles, and races beyond the option of two or more races. And then we also had participants who selected more than one race or two or more races are included in the two or more race category. And we also, we have no participating teachers or educator who self-identified as Asian or American Indian. Participants who selected more than one grade are omitted from subsequent chart that you'll see in the presentation. So just some eye-level data in terms of race. You can see the participation of all members of our student body that are represented are on this slide. You know that we have Latinos in high numbers, then it's African-American, then Caucasian, and that representation is visible on this survey. And then we did ask students and staff to identify their roles or grades and we'll see more of that information as we go. So part of the survey had direct questions. And, you know, as I present here, I want to make sure that I am clear that this is a sensitive topic for many people, but we're only represented, the data is presented from their responses. And so we want to be respectful to those who may have some concern about SRO. So when asked a question, and I'm starting with the middle school, are you afraid of a school resource officer? Eighty-two percent of them say not afraid and eighteen percent say yes, they are afraid. And we took this data further and showing it to you by different ethnicity. And I'll just pause for a second so that you have an option to look at it. And so when asking the question of are you afraid or not, it's pretty, you know, it goes between fourteen percent to about twenty-two percent who say they are afraid, but the majority are not afraid. Another question, still six-eight, when we asked the question, do you feel safe attending school with a school resource officer? We have eighty-seven percent says yes, they feel safe, but thirteen percent don't feel safe. And so broken by different races, again, as you can see here, we're averaging again from eleven to about eighteen percent of those who say they, 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 you know, they answered the question, do you feel safe attending with a school resource officer? But the data again overwhelmingly in favor. So now the same questions, moving to the high school. When we ask, are you afraid of school resource officer? We have eighty-seven percent versus thirteen percent who says they're not afraid. And then broken by data, I mean, by different ethnicity, you can see that the average, you know, varies from about eight percent to about twenty-two percent who are saying, you know, they, who are responding is are you afraid with school resource officers? So do you feel safe attending school with a school resource officer at the high school level? You know, nine percent of them say they're not safe, but the majority feel safe. Again, broken by race, you can see the data, you know, for black students and for Asian students, that percentage of, of those who don't feel safe is a bit larger compared to the ethnicities. Trying to read above the. All right, so when we talk to educators and we ask the question, do you support Columbia Public Schools to continue working with the Columbia Heights Police Department? Ninety-four percent of their staff say yes and six percent says no. And so broken by race again, you can see that there is seven percent of our white teachers or educators who say no and ninety-three percent say yes. So then that's just the question about are you afraid of the school resource officer asking teachers? And ninety-one percent says they're not afraid and nine percent say that they are afraid. And so when you look at it by races, it's about ten percent of our white educators who express being afraid compared to the rest of the other demographics. So part of this survey was also collecting some narrative responses. Again, it's an anonymous survey, but the comments that were offered, we start with the ones that we say concern. And so when we say concern, it's because, you know, we are clear that in asking these questions, some people did express some being afraid. And so some of the comments that we see, it says, I feel that the SRO shouldn't be walking around the school. That makes me feel as if I'm doing something wrong, but ultimately I do feel safe with the current SRO. So this is that idea of, you know, when the students see SROs in school, they feel like they're being watched. And so, you know, I don't know that if you haven't done anything wrong, you want to be watched, but it just gives that feeling and that's what they're expressing here. Although some of them says, I do feel safe even though I feel like I'm being watched. And then another comment is, I don't feel safe at school in general because of school shooting. But if there is an officer in the building, I think I will feel safer. So the idea here, when we look at this comment, is that we're looking at the perception of what happens in school nationwide or even in Minnesota. And students have heard about shootings and so that worried them, but they still say they feel safer. And the last comment that I'll comment on is sometimes it's scary because of the USA event, because of the events in the USA and in Minnesota where people of color are profiled or treated wrong. So you see students who are aware of, you know, their racial identity and how sometimes that is affected by those in position of authority. And so these are the summary of the concerns, the comments that we bring up as concerns because we are concerned that some of our students feel that way. And then we have what we call positive comments. And these are positive because they are in a response to, we have SROs in school and we really feel good about them. That's why we call them positive comments. And so one of those comments is, you know, they are highly visible when out and about in the school. And then another comment says, the SRO provided positive role model and the good community contact for students. And the last one says, even though I don't fully support what the police do, it's still better to feel safe with a police officer in the building. And so these are the positive comments. So there are also negative comments and they're negative not because people spoke about them negatively, but they're negative in the sense, the perception of those who responded towards the SRO. So the first one says, my answer is, I don't know a lot about these questions, which isn't the option. While there are times when having an SRO officer on campus will be helpful, it also increases the punitive atmosphere of our school. So I think this is those who feel that, you know, schools will be fine without SROs. And when you bring them on, it's as if we're doing something wrong. So that's the notion here. And another comment says, uniform officers do not make me feel safe. So for some of our students and some of our staff, it's a trigger to see somebody in a uniform. And finally, the, the last comment says, I feel that we do not need to have SROs in school. So, these are some of those comments we call negative because people have an aversion to school resource officers. So, the focus group, we summarize the focus group because when we did the focus group at the, the middle school, there were some concern from one or two classrooms. And so, therefore, we chose, we chose to omit some of the, the data from that. And so, in summary, when we look at the focus group and the conversation that we had with student, more students were in favor of SROs. And we do want to acknowledge that some students reported being scared of the police, but far less scared of the SRO. So, when we asked the question about are you afraid of the police, we saw more numbers, yes. When we say are you afraid of the SRO, we saw a fewer number compared to the police. And, and I think when we see that, it's because of the relationship that we know the SROs have had in the school versus the police that our students may not have a relationship with. So, we also find it beneficial to share the Minnesota Student Survey data because this is not our own data, but it's longitudinal data that has been collected. This survey has been collected since nineteen eighty-nine by the Minnesota Department of Education. And it's also an anonymous survey that is done in a sixth, seventh, eighth, and twelfth graders. And I'm just going to touch on two of the questions here that speak to this same context and topic that we were asking about. So, the first question said, is there a police officer or school resource officer at your school? And when you look, it's a yes or a no, and I don't know. And when you look at the data across, you have a lot of yeses, but you also have the I don't know. So, I'll speak to that on my next slide. And when you go to the bottom, there is a question about if police officer or school resource officer at your school, I think it is a good idea to have a school resource officer or police officer at your school. And there are four options given, strongly agree, agree, disagree, and strongly disagree. I mean, of course, when we take, we give surveys, we like the answers that give the strongly agree. But here, you have a variation between strongly agree and agree, which we'll still consider as positive. But then, when you look at the disagree or strongly disagree, you just have, you know, very small numbers. And we see some similarity between these responses from outside and our responses from inside. So, like with any survey, there are takeaways. And so, our takeaways were as follow. The majority of our students are in favor of having SROs in school, as you've seen in the data. And then, a few students do not understand the roles and responsibility of SROs. And I think in the Minnesota Student Survey, you also saw that some of them didn't know if we had SRO or not. So, we also have student and staff that report feeling safe because of the SRO presence in school. And then, a few students are afraid, and the data showed us that even when we broke it by, by the different demographic, ethnic groups. And so, and they, they attribute the, the fear to personal experiences or community experiences, things that they've seen down to their community or people who are representative of their ethnicities. And then, there is this perception that the SRO presence deter negative behaviors. I think we saw that in the comments when they say, I feel like I'm being watched. And so, if you feel like you're being watched, for some people, they don't do, if they're going to do negative things, they don't do it. And so, our recommendations are as follow. We, we, we need to do a better job of introducing our SRO to our staff and students at both of the schools, Columbia Academy and Columbia Heights High School. And then, you know, that includes who is the SRO, what are their job responsibilities, and then, what are these opportunities that the, the Columbia Heights Police Department offers? And then, we also believe that we need to continue communicating about our partnership between the schools and the Columbia Heights Police Department.
And then, finally, the term of the agreement, January first, twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And so, it's a, it's a calendar year contract. And this agreement totals one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred. So, it's for two full-time school resource officers, one at the middle school and one at the elementary school. What did I say? I said elementary. One at the middle school, one at the high school. With that, I will stop sharing my screen. And again, this was an informational tonight and coming back on November twenty-second.
Any questions? I'll start. So, I've got questions about the, the data and what students had to say. We were lucky enough to be able to see the comments that all, that the students made, which was wonderful. Non-identifying, absolutely not. But there were a lot of really troubling and concerning comments, especially about the negative impact to students' mental health seeing an officer with a gun in their school. And I think that we can't ignore that, and we can't sort of set it to the side and, and, and say, well, that's just, you know, a kid, or that's just a couple kids. I mean, these are kids that are really struggling and felt brave enough to put that on a form and to say, you know, yeah, this is really scary. I'm worried about getting hurt, and the worry is not just about people coming from outside and hurting. The worry is about, you know, making a mistake and something happening in our schools. And so, I think we have to, we have to grapple with that as we move forward in this, you know, in the contract. We have to grapple with the idea of, we know, I mean, we're doing a lot of PLCs. Our staff knows, we know. A lot of my work outside of being a school board member is with children and families with trauma. And we know that chronic trauma makes it really hard for kids and for adults to do and learn new things. So, I'm, I am just, I'm curious about how we are moving forward in supporting our students who are struggling with this, with having an SRO in our schools. Is there, is there any thought or plan to, to address that, those concerns? Because some of those concerns were really, I mean, I'm grateful for the students that were so brave to say things that were really hard. And I want to make sure that we're honoring them as well as we move forward. So, has that been discussed at all?
So, the survey was anonymous. You know, what it did, it gave us some clear indication of where our students are. And so, there are those who are afraid. And the question will be, how do we identify those who are afraid and what do we do? So, since it was anonymous, we don't know, but we know we have a reality in our school that some students are afraid of it. So, I.
Well, I think that's why one of the recommendations was to be more strategic about how we are starting the year with the SROs, introducing them to the kids, letting them, helping them understand what their role is in the building, and making sure that we're building those relationships. And so, that was one of the recommendations, I think specifically for that, to make sure that we're, we're being, we're emphasizing that more. Because even from the national survey, though our, I think ours is less, you saw kids that, well, we don't even, we don't know who have SRO, we don't know what they do, we don't see them. They should know, and they should know what their role is. So, I think that's a big part of it.
Yeah, as part of our Student Wellness Committee, where we have students on the committee as well as staff and community members, one of the recommendations last spring, and particularly, there were high school students on the committee, they created with the help of Director Stunkel, I mean, you know, like one of those flyers that you see in the bathroom stalls, for example, with a QR code on it, and it listed out all of the different supports for students. So, you know, if students do have a, a legal question or concern, they can turn to an SRO. But there's also social worker support, school psychologist support, time to think, or, or change to chill room support. So, we tried to make those really public for kids and got a positive response and want to expand that to the middle school as well. So, their, students can like really visibly see what are the different supports that I have right here for me in my school if I'm feeling a certain way, because as Director Nimway mentioned, you know, surveys are anonymous. And so, we don't, I don't have a list of those particular kids, but we want the kids to know that they can reach out when they're, when they're having those kinds of needs. Additionally, we're working with our secondary schools to work with staff on identifying authentic relationships with students, because we know that really matters. And then, working on a mechanism to poll students so that students, if they feel comfortable, can name. What we want to know is, who's your person? Like who, is there a trusted adult that you have in school? And so, that, that staff person can receive their list of, like, say they have five kids that named them, so then, they'll know, staff and students will know that they can turn to one another. Something we're experimenting with, or we're, you know, in the planning stages right now, but we just know that relationships are really foundational and matter in, in these cases.
Other questions?
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, some of that, I think, you know, you're looking at a quarter of students in most of our racial groups that are afraid. And what I'm hearing back is we should educate them to not be afraid as opposed to that might be founded in our historical relationship with police and what they've seen happen in their own context, in their own lives, in their own neighborhoods, around our city, not here necessarily in heights, but within a ten-mile radius. And, and I, I was hoping, I guess, when we asked that, that there would be something in our response that validated that perhaps they're not crazy for that. Because we do have other students saying, I feel safer with police here, even though when we look at data from around the country, SROs do not prevent school shootings. They don't, there is not data that says that our kids are actually statistically safer, but we call that valid. And we don't call the kids who are afraid and are saying things like, I'm afraid I'm going to get, I'm afraid the SRO is going to kill me. We had a kid that was brave enough to write that on a form, and they walk around every day thinking that about these. And that matters to me, that matters, that that's how our kids are feeling. And I want that to not be taken as crazy or as hysterical, but as valid. My other questions are much more involved in the actual SRO contract. There's verbiage in here about creating informants. There's verbiage in here about surveillance of gang activity. There's verbiage in here about the role of the officer being policing, not relationship. And there's not verbiage in here about de-escalation. There's not verbiage in here about when we hear kids saying, I feel like I'm being watched, and we go, that's a good thing because then you won't do bad stuff. That isn't necessarily a good thing. When kids feel surveilled, when they feel watched, when the police are here and their stated objective is surveillance, our kids don't have the right to not be here. Our kids don't have the right to not be surveilled. They don't get to pick that. And, and so, I have concerns about that. And then, I have concerns about the costs. In, in twenty nineteen, we were at ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and seven. Last year, that went up twenty grand to a hundred and nine thousand. This year, it's going up another thirteen grand to a hundred and twenty-two. And that doesn't even count when they show up at a football game, when they come and, when they come and do anything outside of just being here in our space. We're talking about twelve thousand four hundred and two thousand, twelve thousand four hundred and two dollars just last year for them to come and be at football games, for them to come and be at places where actually we maybe do need that crowd control. So, when we're talking this, we're not talking a hundred, we're probably talking a hundred and fifty thousand this year for police to be here. And I am just wondering, when we are getting rid of deans, when we don't have librarians, when we don't have speech therapists, when there are people, when we're talking about who's your adults, not one of them is going to the SRO and saying, that's my adults. And if we are spending this kind of money on policing but not on the adults, I'm just wondering, like, at what point, at what, what number of kids being afraid is, is enough to matter to us? And at what point, the SRO contract going up and up and up, we go, we can't afford that anymore? And I think my last thing is, we have kids being arrested in our schools. There were twenty-four arrests last year, twelve of them in the middle school. Middle school kids with arrest records now. And I addressed that in our last session, and I asked for concessions on that with the police, and that did not go anywhere. So, when we've got kids who are being surveilled and getting arrest records, and we're paying this much for it, I am concerned about that. And so, yes, I don't know how much of that is a question, but those are the things that are on my mind. I do care that kids are scared of shootings, I do. I care that we have police, I care that we keep a good relationship with our police officers. I care that we probably even pay this twelve grand for them to be at football games because I think we need some of that stuff. But I think that we really need to be honest about whether it matters that our kids are scared.
Was there a question?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm done. Mary?
I did have a question related to the increase in costs, so that Members Zymet said too. In the, in the contract that we received, the copy of the contract, compared to the expenditures, there was a difference. The expenditures that we got listed a hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and five dollars, but the contract adds up to a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
So, I, yeah.
Yeah.
Just quick on that. So, you know, we, we live and breathe on a different fiscal year.
Yep.
So, we're, we're actually getting expenses over two fiscal years in, in the, in the one contract because the contract's calendar year. So, that's one thing that'll show discrepancy.
Perfect.
The other thing that'll show discrepancy is that during distance learning, we had different levels of SROs. So, that will change costs over the last couple of years. So, comparing it year over year is not a fair comparison because we, we didn't have, you know, full SRO activity here during that time. So, that's, that's definitely a change.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I, and I totally, as I was looking at those numbers, I did, I did like exclude twenty-twenty and twenty-one through the, for, for that reason. But I am concerned because looking at the total, the difference between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three is a eleven-point-eight percent increase in cost. And I'm curious, you know, I know that there's a lot of other things baked into that, first of all. But when we look at the average, the average person across the country is getting a four percent increase, but many people are not getting anywhere near that. I'm curious why we have jumped to almost a twelve percent increase in our cost between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three.
Are you looking at the actual?
Yeah.
Contract, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two contract versus the twenty-two, twenty-three contract?
So, I'm looking at the numbers, the one hundred and nine thousand four hundred and ninety-two for twenty twenty-two, and then, looking at the one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred. And that is a difference of thirteen thousand and eight dollars, which is about, it's eleven-point-eight if we're going to be really specific.
I, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, and I have to get back to you on that. Again, you know, I think the thing to stress is that we're looking at calendar year contract versus fiscal year. So, we're, we're looking at, and we had, we had officer changes. I think that's another thing to look at. New officers' cost versus old officers' cost is different. They also have their own union contracts. They also have their own union contracts that are renewed. So there's a lot of factors into that, and I can't comment specifically on that right now.
I also, I appreciate that. Thank you. Another thing I'm looking at also is the significant increase in the additional costs. It doubled from 2019, it nearly doubled from 2019 where we were spending $6,500 outside of our contract to $12,000. And let me be clear, I want our kids and our students and our staff and everybody who comes near our school district, I want everybody to be safe. But as we're talking and we look at all of the other people that are involved in our school district, we look at our superintendent who didn't take a pay raise last year, we look at our school, our teachers who had a 1% raise, I think that we have to also be fiscally responsible and we have to say, why, like where are these additional costs coming from and how do we account for that?
Sure. Previously, we did have, and I believe it was, there was some sort of mentoring, it was grant-funded, we had the officers here, but we weren't getting billed for it because it was being covered. And it wasn't necessarily unilateral across everything that they were doing for us, like some of the additional traffic stuff that they do, but for, as far as the games go and what they were doing mentoring with students that helped cover those costs, which meant we didn't get billed for them. That doesn't exist right now, so we're getting billed straight for that time. So that's, that's a big part of that.
And then my last question is related to, I know in the survey, and we didn't get the full questions here, we've talked about them before, but one of the questions listed off all the wonderful things that the police department does in conjunction and to build community. I'm curious though, and this is not necessarily a question for you, Brian, I do, you know, this is probably a question for the chief, but it is, you know, if, if we didn't have them here, if we, if we weren't paying them and having them be here to do those things, would those community building events still happen? Or do they only happen because they're partially subsidized by the, by the Columbia Heights School District?
Do you want to come up?
Sure.
Not to put you on the spot, Chief, I really appreciate it.
No, no, no problem. I can try to answer some of the wage increases as well. So this is something that every police department is dealing with across the state of Minnesota. And it comes down to workers' comp rates. The workers' comp rates for every police department has, well, I don't know about every police department, but for us it tripled. And so that's where you're getting the significant increase. The, the, the contract, the union contract was a, quite frankly, a piece of cake. It's the workers' comp that tripled from last year to this coming 2023 budget, and that really impacted our operating budget. And so those numbers, I believe, they went from just under $4,000 a year to just over $11,000 for each, each SRO. So that, and that's, that's, so you multiply that times 29 officers, it, it gets pretty, pretty high pretty quick. I'm hoping that that number does go down over the next few years, but I think for the, at least for the foreseeable future, the, with our, so we're insured through the League of Minnesota Cities and based on some of the conversations we've had with them, they don't see that going down, at least for the next couple of years, but I think within the next five, that'll start to, to come down. To answer your question about these other programs, as far as whether those, I think the question is whether those would continue with or without a contract. We've had a, we've had an SRO program with the school district for about 30 years, give or take. I've been here 28 years and it's been, it was in place long before I started. And so because it's such an integral part of, of our police department, I don't know if I can answer that question specifically because I think we would have to go back and reevaluate what we would do internally with that. So I, I don't have a, a specific answer for you on, on that unfortunately, because that would, that would require some work with our command staff and then also with our, with our leadership at the, at the city council level as well.
So the, like the basketball with the cop and the brother, big brothers, big sisters isn't part of your mission? Like that's not stuff you would just do without money?
It's part of our mission, but I think what we would have to look at doing is reevaluating, quite frankly, the relationship because, you know, if this is something where, again, if the school district from a philosophical standpoint does not want to go with an SRO program, you know, then the question is, is do you want cops in the schools at all? I mean, that would be my first question, and if so, then, then to what extent? I think those are some questions that we would have to have as, as, as well.
Things that I've heard from parents and stuff is, it's, it's that optional piece, right? Like if, if a student wants to come and play basketball with you, they get to choose that. If they have to be in school every day and they're surveilled, that's not by choice. And so those things that you do that are, that are truly investment and that kids can opt into, I think have great value. And I think like, those are just things that obviously when you're building surveys, those are the things that we're highlighting, even though they're not part of the contract at all. And so I guess that was, the question was whether those are things that are intrinsic to your community policing or if it's just kind of stuff that you do because we're friends or...
It's, it's a big part of, of what we do. The, the school, the school-based basketball program is, is ran with our gym, so that's, that, that, that is, that is, you know, that's, there's a good possibility, I think, that that would probably continue. But again, it goes back to, I think the question would be is how, how much of a footprint do you, do you want us to have in the school district? I think that's one of the big questions that would probably have to, have to get worked out.
So now that I've asked you all the hard questions, I have an easier question for you.
Sure.
So the, after we had our last meeting, when you came in, we discussed things, I talked to Superintendent Stenvik right after that and, or the next day, and she said you were exploring non-uniform options for SROs. Is that something that we could expect in the next, the next calendar year?
Yes, that's correct. Our plan is to get that hopefully implemented by January. And we're, both Mo and Ibrahim are looking at some different options and, and Matt's at Staff in Command right now, so he's due, I think, back on the 5th of December. So once he's back, we'll, we'll kind of finalize that. So I, I know they've already been looking at some, some different options, so that the, the plan is to go with some type of, of a soft uniform.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Thank you for, for joining us.
Oh, yes, absolutely. And if you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. I'll, I'll just, I'll stick around the back there in the peanut gallery, so, thanks.
Thank you. So we will see you back on?
22nd.
The 22nd. For an action item.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Director Bennett for the resolution to combine precinct for special, precincts for special elections.
Chair Mueller, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. Yearly, a resolution to combine precincts for special elections is brought to the board for approval in case we need a special election. This year, we will be needing a special election, so the board will be asked at the next board meeting to approve a resolution to combine the district from 12 precincts down to two. This would be a cost savings for the district. So again, it'll be brought forward at the November 22 meeting, hopefully by Don Hoiam.
Thank you. And we, we, this is something we have done in the past, but any, any questions?
I can, I can make a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is something that we do have to do on a yearly basis. Normally, we do that in January, at our January board meeting. I'm assuming we have to do this a little bit earlier because we do expect to have a special election, and I have a feeling that this has to be put into place legally prior to us making, finalizing that date. I'm just going to go on an assumption. If I'm wrong, please let me know and I will do a retraction.
Dawn will let you know next week. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Wait, can I just make a really quick comment? Director Bennett, you've done a wonderful job filling in, and I want to thank you.
Good job.
We, we do love Dawn as well.
Next, we'll move on to our action items. Our one and only action item today is presented by me. So we have, in our information or when we do our stuff in January, that the Subcommittee on Community Engagement is chaired by the vice chair and the Subcommittee on Policy is chaired by the chair of the board. And with the change in our positions, with me being elected as chair and Laura being elected as vice chair for just the last little bit here of the year, I'm asking for a motion to edit that temporarily, temporarily waive this rule until we, until we establish January organizational meeting so that me, Chair Mueller, will continue to chair the Subcommittee on Community Engagement through the end of December 2022 and that Vice Chair Palmer will chair the Subcommittee on Policy through the end of December 2022 so we don't have to change committees for the last month and a half. So, any questions on that? If not, I would like to ask for a motion to, for a motion to temporarily waive the rule for the chairs of the Subcommittee.
So moved.
Mary?
Second.
And second by Brenna, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And motion carries? Thank you very much. Next, we will move into closed session. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D dot 03, the board will meet in closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiations. Great. Thank you, everybody. We are now returning to an open session from our closed session. We were closed in accordance to Minnesota Statute 13D dot 03 for the purpose of discussing, discussing negotiations. So now we have returned to open session. Next is board topics. Anybody have board topics? Laura?
I do. It, it going into, going into next year, of course, the Minnesota School Board Association has disassociated itself with the National School Board Association and is now going to be going with a brand new school board association, which is COSPA, I believe it's C-O-S-S-B-A, which will have, it's going to have a lot of the same underpinnings and supports and basically the mission of NSBA or what we've been accustomed to. Now, in this state, we can currently, I, I, the, the Minnesota School Board Association has said that we can attend either conference, and I don't believe that there will be a penalty. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. It's terrible. I don't believe that there's going to be necessarily a penalty or an upcharge for not being part of the, with Minnesota not being a part of it. Because there were quite a few states that had separated from the National School Board Association. I guess the question here is, is do we want to belong to a national organization? And if so, which one do we want to belong to? I can come up with arguments for both. You know, National School Board, we've pretty much all been there and we're, we're familiar with the format and the opportunities that they have to offer. But it would be kind of interesting to be at new, fresh eyes with, going with this new organization. You know, I mean, let's see what maybe we haven't done or haven't experienced over the, over the last, how many years? And of course, the Minnesota School Board Association will be attending that particular conference and not the, the National School Board Association. So, there we go.
Is that something that we can add to our work session agenda next week? I know we probably have lengthy agenda, we're going to talk about that too, but we do have to look at registration, and I know Member Granland and myself are on the rotation for attending the national conference. I would like to attend the national conference, so if we could discuss that.
Yeah.
I'm, you know, open to attending either. So if we can just have a brief discussion on that next week?
Yeah. And you can even do one and one. They're both in, they're both overlapping.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, and then there actually is another conference, which I'm actually hoping to attend at some point. It's actually for special education districts.
Okay.
So, but that one is not until like November or something of that year, but that one really sounds really super interesting.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other board topics?
Laura?
I'll get there. I've got two. One is that the Subcommittee on Community Engagement meets next week. I have asked Member Lewis to not attend that committee meeting because we would be at quorum. With three board members, our quorum is three. So just wanted to make sure, Brenna, that you would be able to still attend that Subcommittee, which is after our work session next week. I've asked Member Lewis to not attend. So if you weren't going to be able to make it, I was going to ask her to come.
Ask her to come.
But we want to be conscious of not having quorum.
Yeah. Okay.
Next, just a reminder that we have our book study, and we've put that off a couple of times, so I believe it's chapters one through three for next week, and we will be doing our book study next week. So make sure that you read those. Are there any other, other?
Um, it's the little things that make me. So two things. One is we received an email from a caregiver in the community asking about a survey regarding SROs in our schools, but for the caregiving adults. And so I meant to say it during the, the earlier discussion, it didn't seem like there was a good place for that. So I'm hoping that we could think about ways to, like, how do we engage the students and then also the families as well? I'm grateful we had families come in and share their experiences tonight during the portion where we had comment, and I'm grateful for the people who sent emails, but I just want to make sure that, that we are thinking about how do we engage caregivers too, because it sounds like some people are wanting to provide that feedback.
Thank you for bringing that up. But that was actually one of the things I wanted to bring up. I just completely forgot about it. Thank you.
Yeah.
And the board members can discuss it. I'm not sure that there's time with the...
Oh, yeah.
Meaningful time. However, we do have an annual mechanism by which we survey parents, and it used to be that horrendously long 30-minute survey, which we've cut down.
Yes.
And because it's now the one, the version that we've cut down, we were able to add and tailor questions. I know, for example, North Park wants to add a STEM question in there as well. So we would be able to add some, add a question or two, to that annual spring survey.
Yeah.
Probably for middle school and high school, maybe for everyone. I'm open to that.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have any like belief or expectation that it's going to be done in the next two weeks. Like that's not, I mean, you do a lot of really amazing things.
I need that data by Friday.
Yeah. But you know, I'm not, I'm not asking you to be a magician in addition to being a superintendent, so just I think future state-wise, I just want to make sure that, that that got shared. And the other thing is robotics has its second meet tomorrow, and super excited for those kiddos. It is kind of a bummer it's not livestreamed this year, and they're only letting a limited amount of people in to observe it. I know. I have questions. But...
Not controlled by Columbia, not controlled or decided by Columbia Heights Public Schools.
Correct. We, we would not do that. But, you know, these kiddos are working really, really hard, and I think if anybody in the community has experience with robotics or robotics adjacent, please reach out to, you know, yeah, to, to who? Anybody, like who should, you know, please reach out to...
Jake Henderson, Activities Director.
Mr. Henderson. Thank you, yes. And because we would love to have more people in the community come in and talk to these kiddos, not only does it help them know that this is realistic goals for them, it, it also actually...
it, it also actually helps them in their standings because they get points for doing outreach or for having people come in. So, you know, please reach out if you have any experience with any of those things because these kiddos would love to hear you talk about the cool things that you did. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. One other item is that the high school choir concert is tomorrow. They're having their first choir concert of the year at the Foreign Arts Center. So something to come and, come and that's it. Anything else? Any other board topics? All right. If nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting at 9:20.